Good morning, everybody. I would like to call this public meeting into order. If you'd all please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, and welcome. We're really happy to be up here in Vandaling. I just want to take a couple or a minute or two just to go through and recognize all of the borough officials here in Vandaling. So we'd like to acknowledge the mayor of Vandaling, Thomas Prince. Everybody knows our council president up here, John Caracholo. Council vice president, William Matos. Councilman Fran Pansar. Councilwoman Amanda Serge. Councilwoman Colleen Sullivan. The tax collector, who I know is here, Mary Ann Ruzbaskin. The borough secretary, Nancy Perry. And the solicitor, Jeffrey Levine. So thank you very much for having us this morning. And as I said, we are really honored to be here in Vandaling. This is a remarkable community, and we need to recognize the invaluable contributions that Vandaling has made to Lackawanna County. Vandaling holds a special place in Lackawanna County history. It's more than just a borough. It's a testament to the spirit of perseverance and community that defines Lackawanna County. Vandaling's history is deeply rooted, as we all know, in the coal mining industry, which served as the backbone of our local economy for generations. Established in the late 19th century, this town quickly grew as a hub for hard-working miners and their families. The coal mine here in Vandaling not only fueled the industries of the northeastern United States, but also powered the dreams and aspirations of countless individuals seeking a better life. The people of Vandaling have always embodied resilience and solidarity. During the boom years of the early 1900s, this community thrived with vibrant local businesses and a strong sense of camaraderie. Even during challenging times, Vandaling's residents have shown an unwavering commitment to supporting one another, preserving their heritage, and looking toward the future with hope and with determination. So this morning, as we hold our meeting in Vandaling, we as Lackawanna County Commissioners not only celebrate your storied past, but also your promising future. This town's enduring legacy serves it as an inspiration for all of us here in Lackawanna County. The values of hard work, community, and perseverance that built Vandaling from the very beginning continue to guide us as we face new challenges and new opportunities. So it's with deep admiration and deep respect that we are here this morning in Vandaling, and we promise to work together with you to continue to make Lackawanna County one of the best counties in the state of Pennsylvania. So thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve our minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Would anyone like to discuss the agenda items this morning? No? Okay, we'll move into the resolutions. Resolution 24-0200.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's General Fund numbers: 374, 378-375, 257, inclusive of 12, $18,494,314.36. The county's electronic fund transfer is fully on payroll accounts, $10,773,931.88. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on August 8th, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0200?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0192.
This is entering into a memorandum with the Tech Accelerator Program. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce and its affiliate organization, the Scranton Lackawanna Industrial Building Company, also known as SLIPCO, to provide financial support for the Tech Accelerator at Lackawanna County Entrepreneurship Program facilitated and managed by the Chamber of Commerce. Financial support will be provided from Lackawanna County to the Chamber of Commerce through Lackawanna County American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds in the amount of $180,000 to facilitate and manage the program to commence August 7th, 2024, and expire December 31st, 2025. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on August 8th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnotta.
Thanks, Chief. I guess I'm not used to using microphones often, huh? First, before I begin on talking about this program, I just wanted to say thanks to Maria Day. She's here from the Chamber. She runs the IGNITE program, which oversees a lot of the workforce development and workforce programs, which IGNITE from the Scranton Chamber is part of both of the MOUs that we'll be going over today. As was stated, this is the Tech Accelerator Program. Our interest in getting involved in this is using ARPA funds, and I'll tell you why. This is a 10-week program that's designed to help early-stage, for-profit, technology-based startup companies to learn, to grow, to network. The eight startup entrepreneurs are chosen, it's a very competitive program, to be selected by the Chamber, and they go through a weekly, in-person classroom session. And there's a number of different tools that they're given to get started in this entrepreneurial program, and it's everything from business formation strategies, customer delivery, marketing, but I think the most important is both financial planning and risk management. We are with, you know, in this partnership, this is an extension of our partnership with the Chamber to continue investing in our workforce and in entrepreneurialism in Lackawanna County. So far, there's successfully been 15 total graduates from two cohorts that they have had in both spring of '23 and fall of '23. This entire program, we would be using American Rescue Plan dollars, so it would be at no cost to the General Fund of the county. And the program that we are asking is for $420,000 to be utilized over three cohorts. So it would be fall of '24, spring of '25, and fall of '25. So that would take us to 24 entrepreneurial entrepreneurs in the startup tech industry. And then what we do is it would be $180,000 to the Chamber for that, so it would be $60,000 per cohort, and the county maintains the remaining $240,000 to be able, when they successfully complete this program, to be given a reimbursement grant of $10,000 from the county to help jumpstart as they begin their business. So there, you know, this is just a wonderful program that the Chamber's put on, and we are glad to be a part of it, to continue investing in the people of Lackawanna County.
Okay, great. Any questions for Director Magnotta?
I can think I'd like to just comment on that, which, you know, just down the road here, we have Gentex, which is a very technology-based, I mean, it's just phenomenal what they do there, but it's so important for what we're doing here to, you know, we don't want to be known as just warehousing throughout our region, so we've got to promote our technology-based companies and hopefully get some of these new people in, and that's going to help bring in some other drive economic development. So this is a, it's a big deal, and it's something that has to be done, so it's good stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a really wonderful program, I think, you know, to have that encouragement necessary, and the tools, the mentors, the resources, and the training necessary to help you grow and succeed, it's a really, really wonderful thing for the regional economy and to be able to support your family as well. And I know it's a little different, but, you know, I talk about it a lot, and my parents have been local business owners for 43 years, so I've seen the highs and lows and the difficulties throughout my whole entire life. For somebody starting out and somebody going through this, to have that support and access is really crucial. So again, you know, and this is just another incredible thing, Kristin, for our relationship to continue to build with the Chamber and all that they do over there. So thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 24-0192.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0193.
This is entering into a memorandum with the Carbondale Technology Transfer Center Incubator Program. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce and its affiliate organizations, Scranton Lackawanna Industrial Building Company, also known as SLIPCO, to provide financial support for the Carbondale Technology Transfer Center Light Industrial and Kitchen Incubator Program facilitated and managed by SLIPCO. Financial support will be provided by, from Lackawanna County to the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, SLIPCO, through Lackawanna County American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds in the amount of $75,000 to manage and grow the incubator program at $25,000 a year to commence on January 1st, 2024, and expire December 31st, 2027. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on August 8th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Magnotta.
Thank you, Chief. Again, this is another program in partnership with the Scranton Chamber of Commerce and SLIPCO specifically. What's important here is in 2023, both SLIPCO, which is Scranton Lackawanna Industrial Building Company, dedicated $50,000, as well as Lackawanna County $10,000, and also $50,000 from the Carbondale Lackawanna Industrial Development Company to initially get started with the CTTC. It's been there for a very long time, I believe since 1996, and there's a wonderful man by the name of Paul Brown, who has ran that program successfully for a very long time. And over the last year, the Scranton Chamber of Commerce has stood side by side with Mr. Brown to see just how this light industrial and kitchen incubator functions and what may be needed to help it continue to progress and grow. So now, this is a program where we will be, you know, a partner in the program to contribute, excuse me, $25,000 per year for '25, '26, and '27, so a total of $75,000 to continue to grow the incubator tenants, as well as to help with the bricks and mortar and bringing the actual incubator up to the standards that it needs to be for both light industrial and kitchen manufacturing. And also, just to let you know, currently, there are approximately 18 CTT tenants that are there, and these tenants, you know, they have joint management, shared services, will be helping, working with the Chamber to find tenants and keep up the building. So it is a lot of work, it's an older building, but it has been very successful for a long time, and we want to continue to see it be successful and also open up, as Commissioner Sherramack had mentioned, and Commissioner McGloin, you know, this is just another aspect of entrepreneurialism, where we are providing a place for light industrial manufacturing, but also a, you know, a certified kitchen incubator program, which has just been really, really successful in the past and has had folks grow out of that space and have very successful, you know, homegrown businesses. So again, we will be in contract for the year of '25, '26, '27, $25,000 a year, a $75,000 investment. This will be through the American Rescue Plan dollars, so again, it will cost nothing to the General Fund of the county.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0193.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, on the question, I just think it's fitting that we're voting on this since we are up here in Vandaling. It just shows that we're continuing to make a commitment to make sure that we spread this money around in the up valley. And this is going to create jobs, it's going to create these small businesses, and it's really a great program, so thank you for explaining it. Okay, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, Resolution 24-0194.
This is awarding a municipal electronic recycling collection event grant. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby award Lackawanna County municipal electronic recycling collection event grant to the following municipalities and their residents: Archibald, Blakely, Dalton, Dixon City, Jefferson Township, Jessup, and Mayfield. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on August 8th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Environmental Sustainability, Ms. Nicole Shapiro.
Good morning, everybody. So this is our third year of having the electronic recycling event reimbursement grant, so we, Chief Jeffers mentioned the seven municipalities who will be benefiting from this. You know, it might seem like a small dollar amount, it'll be up to $1,000 for each municipality, but that does cover the transportation and event fees for having such events. And I think these events are great, and they've really helped, not completely solved the problem, but helped alleviate a lot of issues we have with illegal dumping in Lackawanna County with these electronics. And I'd just like to bring out some numbers. So before we had the grant, I just pulled up, in 2020, we only recycled about five tons of electronics in the county, 21, 8. And then '22 was the first year of the grant, we recycled 53 tons of electronics, and I'm still missing two tonnage reports for '23, but we're already up to like 30. So this just shows how well the grant is working, so. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0194.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0195.
This is approving the Office of Youth and Family Services professional service agreements. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services professional service agreements for the fiscal year of '24 through '25 with the following: Justice Works Youth Care Incorporated, Service Access and Management Incorporated, Families United Network Incorporated. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on August 8th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Assistant Administrator of Office of Youth and Family Services, Ms. Carrie Browning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
These are all annual renewals. The professional contracts are reimbursed by the state at 80%. So if these providers bill the maximum amount, the county share will be $612,918.31. Justice Works contract is for the outsourcing of the independent living program for mentoring and for independent living groups. The Service Access and Management contract is a contract expansion to double the number of ongoing units and supervisors from two to four and adding four case aids. So this is the contracted entity for ongoing emplacement cases. The addition of the case aids will help with transportation and take the burden off of the caseworkers, which will allow them to focus on the families. And the Families United Network contract is for the outsourcing of the management of our agency foster homes.
Any questions for Mrs. Browning? All right, thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0195?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0196.
This is approving the Office of Youth and Family Services provider agreements. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services provider agreements for the fiscal year '24 through '25 with the following: Delaware County Emergency Youth Academy, Dream Big Youth House, Forget Me Not Children and Youth Services. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on August 8th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
Okay, the Delaware County Emergency Youth Academy and the Forget Me Not Children and Youth House are annual renewal of foster care and shelter care providers. Dream Big Youth House is a new foster contract, and they're needed to maintain the placement options for the children in our county. The rate that we're charged is determined by the specific needs of each child, and foster care and shelter care is 80% reimbursed by the state.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Browning? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0196?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0198.
Approving the Code of Conduct. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve and adopt the Code of Conduct for members of appointed Lackawanna County authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on August 8th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Solicitor, Mr. Donald Frederickson.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, back in March, we adopted a conflict of interest in code of ethics for the county, a comprehensive run and a rewrite of the old code that had been in place for a long time. This Code of Conduct is going to apply to authorities, boards, commissions, and committees, which the Commissioners, of course, appoint, and it's going to extend the requirements of our conflict and code of ethics to those boards, and also remind them of their responsibilities and to avoid conflicts of interest and things of that nature.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0198.
Motion.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, the intent of this code is to assist in achieving fair, ethical, and accountable local government for Lackawanna County. Each individual covered by this code will seek to achieve the utmost ethical standards in the conduct of their duties and responsibilities as an appointed member of a local public body. This is something that all of you deserve. The people of Lackawanna County deserve Board members to be honest, responsible, fair, and protective of the public's interest. You deserve Board members who represent you in the appropriate manner and will always do not what's popular, but what is right.
Thank you, Commissioner McGloin. I agree, this measure is vital to ensure that we as Commissioners uphold the highest standards of integrity, transparency, and accountability in our governance. A clear and enforceable Code of Conduct for our boards, commissions, and authorities provides a framework for ethical behavior, fostering public trust and confidence in the decisions and actions that these citizens will make. It also ensures that all members are held to consistent standards promoting fairness and preventing conflicts of interest. So by adopting this code this morning, we are demonstrating our commitment to good governance and our dedication to serving the best interests of Lackawanna County. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0199.
This is approving a quote for the District Attorney's Office. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the quote for Thompson Reuters West Law for the District Attorney's Office to cost $981 a month for 12 months. Adopted and regulated by the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on August 8th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the District Attorney's Administrative Officer, Mr. Brian Finerty.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to present on behalf of the DA's office. As Mr. Jeffers said, we're asking your approval to approve a quote which will turn into a contract with West Law for the District Attorney's Office to provide legal research to the deputy district attorneys and assistant deputy or assistant district attorneys in the District Attorney's Office. As Mr. Jeffers said, it'll run for 12 months at a cost of $981 a month, and over the 12-month life of the contract, it'll save approximately $8,000 from the previous provider of this service, which was LexisNexis.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Finerty? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 24-0199.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Now is the opportunity for the public to address the board, so if you'd like to come up and discuss anything related to Lackawanna County, we'd be happy to have you. Just a reminder that when you do come up, you have five minutes to speak, and just please say your first and last name for us, for our records. So would anyone from the audience like to come up and speak?
Nobody local, pause three. My name is Bill Andrews, Carbondale. I was at a meeting a couple of months ago. Bill, would you mind using the microphone that's on the table right there? I was at a meeting up in the Abingtons a couple of months ago, and I was, I just wanted to let the county know about a sewer project or paving project on a county road, and that there is a sewer problem that the city of Carbondale was made aware of, and I made two people aware of it. I would hate to see the county pave the road and have this, you know, the sewer, you know, torn up or what, the road torn up, putting new sewer line in. To make a long story short, you took my phone number, and I don't know, maybe you misplaced it or lost it, or you never got back to me. Did you take my phone number? No.
Actually, yeah, so.
You have an update on this?
Yeah, we do, actually Commissioner McGloin and I were talking about this this morning with Brian Jeffers, so Brian, you have a.
So the city of Carbondale has put out an RFP, an emergency RFP, to have the sewer pipes that they own fixed and placed into the ground before the Commissioners pave Gordon Avenue or Gordon Street.
Yes, it is, yes.
Gordon Street in 2025, 2026. It'll be at the end of '25 into '26.
That was their answer. How come you didn't get back to me?
I don't know why I did with your number.
Oh, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the board?
Sure.
It's not anything, you know.
Could you just state your first and last name?
My name is Veronica Hennabich, and originally from Pell Township. Graduated from Pell High School in 1960. So what I want to bring to your attention is that you mentioned the state, you keep on referring to the state, everything is done for the state. The Constitution was written for the Commonwealth, okay? Just to remember where we're coming from. Thank you, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. You're bringing it back to the people, and I like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Would anyone else like to address the board? Anybody else? No? Okay. All right, Commissioners, other business. Commissioner McGloin.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to mention tonight is Troops Police Night Out. It'll be located at the Troop Civic Center at 6:00 PM. Had the chance to attend the Archibald National Night Out last night, which is a tremendous event, and certainly hope for the event tonight that the weather stays, stays clear. Not too long ago, Commissioner McGloin and myself had the, had the opportunity to sit and meet with Lieutenant Governor Austin Davis in Lackawanna County to discuss, to continue our discussions on protecting our children and families from, from gun violence. You know, I think his willingness to hear about the critical issues in our community demonstrates his accessibility and his commitment as Lieutenant Governor. It's crucial that every family in Lackawanna County feels safe in their community and their homes. We're actively developing new initiatives as county commissioners to help combat gun violence here in Lackawanna County, and I believe we must continue to rally together as a community to educate our youth on the dangers of gun violence and the tragedy that follows it. You know, Monday, I had the, the opportunity to attend the music fire and police facility groundbreaking ceremony, and just being able to witness the happiness and enthusiasm of the community in support of, of that project is, is truly wonderful. I'm proud that our county was able to contribute to, to help fund that important facility, which will greatly benefit our dedicated police officers and firefighters, who truly deserve such a valuable resource for their tireless service to our community. As I'm, as I'm sure some of you are aware, this past Tuesday marked another significant milestone in our journey to elevate the travel experience for passengers at the Scranton Wilkes-Barre International Airport. We were thrilled to announce that there is a new luxury motor coach transit service to Philadelphia in partnership with American Airlines and the Landline Company. This service brings a new level of comfort and convenience to our valued travelers, bridging the gap between our region and one of the nation's major travel hubs. And I just, again, I know Commissioner McGloin, you know, talked about it at the beginning of our meeting today, but I just want to thank Vandaling for, for having us here today. The past couple of meetings have, have been on the road, which has been tremendous, and really thrilled that we have the opportunity to come up here today. So thank you so much to the borough officials, and as you know, if there's anything that you ever need, just know that the door is open on Wyoming Avenue, and, you know, we'd love to be able to keep that line of communication open. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sherramack?
Well, I want to thank Vandaling for having us here. John, thank you for setting us up here today.
Lord of Love.
Thank you.
You gentlemen are always welcome.
I like, and say.
You know that from day one.
Yep, I know that, but I appreciate you having us here. Again, to the Police Night Out, I mean, there's going to be a few of them, and it is, it's a, it's a great way to support our police, fire, and EMS. Some of these folks do a lot of volunteering, and it goes unnoticed sometimes, but, you know, as a Lackawanna first responder, it's, it's nice to get a little attaboy once in a while, so go out and support our folks there if you can. Glad to see everyone here, my friend Kevin. So Kevin, there's a little, little information, not everybody knows about Kevin, but you travel, I forget what year that was, but you were a championship snow. I forget what year that was, but you were a championship snow shovel racer. Where did you guys go for that?
In your fire resort in Mexico.
New Mexico. So a group of them went out and raced on snow shovels down ski slopes. I have no idea, it's crazy, but he brought home the gold, I think, but. Good to see you. We got way back from Elk Mountain. Kevin retired from PennDOT, but he was always at Elk Mountain, working there, and we had a lot of fun, but it's nice. And one other milestone, I just want to let everyone know, today is my wife and I's 32nd anniversary, so.
What's the secret? What's the secret?
Just do whatever she tells. That's all, eh?
Thank you. Well, congratulations to Commissioner Shermack, 32 years, wedding anniversary, that's great. And I just want to thank all the officials up here in Vandiling for all the hard work that you do and for having us up here this morning. It's really a great experience, and your council president keeps us informed on everything that goes on up here, and we do appreciate that. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Is that me?
Yeah. I just took my.